Order the August 26th meeting of the Raleigh Planning Commission. Welcome to those present here today and to those joining us online. My name is Nicole Bennett. I'm Chair of the Commission. Commissioners Ohaver and Burnett are absent and excused. A few quick reminders as we get started. Commissioners, please wait to be recognized by the Chair before speaking. And we'll treat applicants, staff, the public, and each other with courtesy at all time. With that, let's get started. We begin each meeting with an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not on the agenda. Is anyone here this morning who would like to comment on an item that is not on today's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will get started with our consent agenda, which includes approval of the August 12th meeting minutes. Does anyone have any comments on the meeting minutes? Okay, if seeing none, could I get a motion to approve the minutes? Commissioner Fox has moved to approve the minutes, so I have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Miller has seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the meeting minutes? Thank you, that's unanimous. We don't have any committee reports, so we'll move to old business. We have one item coming out of old business, Z825 Crosslink Road. This case was initially heard on June 24th, where we received a full staff report, full applicant presentation, and received public comment. The case was deferred to allow the applicant to consider additional conditions. We'll ask staff for a brief update.
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Arthur Cashwell IV. I'm here to present rezoning case Z825 for the 0.67 acre site located at 1011 Crosslink Road. The applicant is requesting rezoning from R4 to R10. And according to the future land use map, the area is designated as a low-scale residential, which aligns with the intent of the R10 zoning district. As stated, this case was presented at a previous planning commission meeting. It was then sent to the city council to have it extended for 60 days. The surrounding zoning pattern is predominantly R-4 with adjacent parcels. So the surrounding zoning pattern is predominantly R4 with adjacent parcels sharing the same low-density residential designation. I'm having within 500 feet of the site there are existing R6 and R10 conditional use districts, as well as office mixed-use and neighborhood mixed-use zoning district within 1,000 feet. This reflects a transition to higher intensity and mixed-use development nearby. This map represents a zoomed out aerial view of the proposed rezoning site. The site is directly adjacent to Biltmore Hills Park. And surrounding zoning includes a mix of low and moderate scale residential districts, as well as nearby mixed-use districts. This slide shows the images from multiple street-level perspectives of the proposed site. The top-left image shows the view of the site when facing it from Crosslink Road. The top-right image depicts the view when approaching the site from Crown Crossing Lane. The bottom-left highlights the property's frontage along Crosslink Road. And the bottom-right displays the frontage along Crown Crossing Lane. This table summarizes the key difference between the existing R4 zoning and the proposed R10 zoning. The minimum lot size for R4 requires larger lots, 10,000 square feet, while R10 allows for more compact lots, enabling more homes on the same land area. Maximum height, both zoning districts allow buildings up to 40 feet or three stories tall. As it relates to setbacks, R10 has reduced setback requirements, 10 feet for the front, 10 feet for the side, and 20 feet for the rear, compared to R4, which is 20 feet for the front, 20 feet for the side, and 30 feet for the rear. I'm allowing for a more flexible site layout. Maximum residential units under R4, the site would accommodate up to four units. And under R10, it would accommodate up to 12 units. This slide demonstrates a mixed performance in terms of transportation access and energy-related indicators. It has a walk score of 20, which falls below the city average of 31, indicating limited pedestrian access to nearby amenities. The transit score is 41, which is notably higher than the city average of 30. That reflects strong access to public transit. The bike score is 34, slightly under the city average of 41, which suggests moderate bike infrastructure. And according to HUD data, the low transportation cost index is in the 70th percentile, meaning that the area is better than 70% of other areas in the country in terms of having low transportation costs. A higher percentile indicates more affordability, suggesting that households in this area, they typically spend less on transportation. And the jobs proximity index is the 75th percentile, indicating slightly lower transportation cost than better-than-average access to employment compared to the broader region. The site is directly served by Gold Raleigh Route 5, Biltmore Hills, and Route 7L Carolina Pines Connector. Route 5 Biltmore Hills runs every 15 minutes, connecting to Idlewild Village and Sanderford Road to the Gold Raleigh Station downtown. Route 7L Carolina Pines Connector runs every 30 minutes, connecting to Tryon Road to Southgate Plaza on Rock Quarry Road. Because the Gold Raleigh bus stop lies on the site's frontage, a development of the site through a Tier 2 or 3 site plan, it will require improvements such as shelter bench and other amenities described in the UDO. The rezoning proposal would add to the city's housing supply by allowing smaller minimum lot sizes and supporting a higher residential yield. While the site currently contains a single home built in 1940, likely considered naturally occurring affordable housing, no subsidized units have been proposed as part of the request. The proposed R10 zoning permits a variety of housing types beyond detached houses that includes townhomes and apartments. It also allows for smaller lot sizes, minimum of 4,000 square feet, well below the citywide average of 0.28 acres. Additionally, the site is within walking distance of transit, with the Gold Raleigh stop located approximately 200 feet away. The site is located in the Census Block Group with a high demographic index of 71%, which is nearly double the citywide average of 37%, that reflects a community with a significant concentration of low-income residents and people of color. People of color represent 88% of the population in this area compared to 46% citywide. 54% of residents are low-income, nearly twice the city average of 29%. While linguistic isolation is slightly lower than average, educational attainment is lower, with 16% of the population lacking a high school diploma compared to 8% citywide. The area has also experienced significant rental cost increases, with median gross rent rising by 43.8% since 2016, well above the city average of 25.5%. These indicators highlight the importance of equitable growth strategies and housing options that meet the needs of vulnerable populations. The proposed rezoning from R4 to R10 is consistent with the site's future land use map and designation of low-scale residential. This land use category typically supports a variety of housing types beyond traditional detached houses. That includes duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, townhomes, and other missing middle housing options, generally on lots of approximately 1/6 of an acre or larger. Although R10 is classified as a medium-density zoning district and is not explicitly listed within the typical range of low-scale residential, that typically falls in the category of R2 through R6, it can be considered consistent with the future land use map when applied with sensitivity to site design and contextual compatibility, especially in areas planned for frequent transit. The site is located within both the frequent transit area and a transit emphasis corridor on the urban forum map. While the requested zoning district is residential and does not include a designated frontage, the proposal is consistent with the urban forum guidance. The comprehensive plan supports increased residential density and housing variety along key transit corridors. And this rezoning aligns with that intent by enabling more compact transit supportive development. The rezoning request is also consistent with the 2030 comprehensive plan, particularly the vision theme of growing successful neighborhoods and communities. The site's proximity to Biltmore Hills Park, a planned Greenway connection, and an existing bus stop just 200 feet away supports the comprehensive plan's goal of encouraging residential growth along frequent transit corridors. The site is located within a frequent transit area and along a transit emphasis corridor, both of which are targeted for increased housing capacity and a variety aligning with the plan's intent to expand housing options near public amenities and transit infrastructure. The rezoning aligns with city goals to increase housing supply and make better use of existing transit access. The site's location within a frequent transit area and transit emphasis corridor makes it a suitable place to accommodate more housing types while supporting a development pattern that is compatible with public transportation. The site does not meet NFPA 1710 standards for the timely arrival of a full alarm assignment, and the required eight-minute travel time is not achieved. There are no outstanding issues associated with this case. If additional discussion is needed beyond today, the next available opportunity will be at the September 9th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. The deadline for the Planning Commission meeting is October 7.
Thank you, Mr. Cashwell. So we heard this at our June 24th meeting. Has there been any update to the case since then?
There have been no updates to the case.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here that wanted to speak on this case? We have received public comment. Are you with the applicant team?
Yeah, we're the applicant.
So I'll give each side another five minutes. So we'll hear from the applicant and those in support.
Good morning. Hi, I'll go over this quickly because I know we already met in June. I'm Cindy Hosseini. I also have Ashken Hosseini and Mike Way. We're the owners and developers. The update since the last meeting, we worked with the neighbors on a few of the concerns that came up, mostly regarding transportation. There is concerns about the adjacent road, Crown Crossing, being a very fast-speed zone. It's an entrance to the park. And so with further development there, there's a lot of concern that right now they're already having traffic issues. Can we get it reevaluated? So we worked with Carter, and the neighbors requested a reevaluation for speed bumps. And we do agree, here's a map, a Google map that's not showing up great of the street, but Crown Crossing Lane at the bottom there, the red block is our lot, is an entrance to the park. And that Fitzgerald Drive has speed bumps and curves, so it has natural traffic calming. But Crown Crossing is basically a throughway to the park and is straight and downhill and has no traffic calming. So it's a big concern of the neighbors with increased development there. So we did work with Carter and the neighbors to request another traffic study. And I believe it might have been completed, so Carter can speak to that. The other major transportation concern was regarding sidewalks. So again, I'll go back to that Google map view. There are sidewalks on the side away from the park, all the way to Biltmore Hills. And you can see right above our little red square, there's a bus stop on the side of the park, but no sidewalks take you all the way there. Our development of the 2/3 of an acre will have sidewalks as part of the UDO, but it will end kind of where that red line ends. So we did reach out to Carter and have sidewalks requested as part of the city's sidewalk priority list that will be addressed later this year. So that is listed with the Transportation Department. And we also reached out to the Parks Department of Biltmore Hills because there's a current project renovating tennis courts and improving accessibility. And we haven't heard back on that, but to see if that could be considered as part of the parks renovation right now. The other thing that was discussed at the meeting was zoning restrictions, material restrictions as a zoning condition. We've surveyed the neighborhood. There's a variety of materials and styles used in the Biltmore Hills area, from homes being built from the 1950s to the 2000s and on, with vinyl siding being used and a variety of materials. We don't plan to use vinyl siding, but we did not want to offer a material restriction because future homeowners would then have to deal with that if making any renovations or adding a shed or whatnot, and might then have a zoning infraction if that condition was added. So that's our update. I'm happy to answer any questions and open it up.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in support of this case? Is there anyone here who wants to speak in opposition to the case? You have five minutes, and please state your name.
Yes, Al Perry, and I'm residing in my parents' house on Crosslink. I think the question of the materiality wasn't so much about the whole neighborhood or Biltmore Hills. I think that the request was to consider materials that would be consistent with the homes that are actually on the street that these would be built on. So it's much more localized than the whole Biltmore Hills. And if you look at the houses, and I think photographs have been presented, if you look at the houses that are on Crosslink and crossing the lane, that they are all in Crown Crossing, include brick elements. So the idea was to have these new homes, reference those by incorporating, if possible, some of the same elements like bricks. And I believe that someone generated and might have submitted an AI presentation where you could do a small home with some of those elements and get the height. I don't know the impact on the cost, but it is possible to do that. That way, even though they are much smaller than the homes on the same street, that they do reference those by including the materials. And there was some question about whether you all consider materialities and restrictions. And I was here before, and it wasn't clear to me whether that had been done. It seemed like there was precedent, but maybe it wasn't precedent. But if, I guess regardless of precedent, because you could set precedent, I think the request was that, if at all possible, would be to have these homes incorporate design elements or materials from across the street, those homes, and that would be brick primarily. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in opposition? Okay, thank you. Just state your name, please.
Good morning. Tracy Hip, and I am a resident on Crown Crossing Lane. I just wanted to say that the community, the members, we've actually been meeting with the developers. We've emailed. We've actually had in-person meetings. So we pretty much come to some good understanding of what we're both looking for. They're going to do their best to kind of keep the aesthetics of the neighborhood. I think one of our major concerns was that there was going to be an ultra-modern housing, whereas we are kind of more traditional. But that's something that we've discussed and talked about. And as the process continues, we'll continue our conversation via email and meetings and coming to consensus on what's best for the neighborhood and what works for the developers and the community.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Doesn't quite sound like opposition, but... Okay, thank you. With that, then we'll bring it back to the table. Commissioners, questions or comments? Yeah, Commissioner Neptune.
Just briefly, I want to acknowledge my appreciation for the engagement between the residents and the applicant, the developer. I think, you know, in terms of the continued growth and development of the city, this is the sort of engagement you would prefer to see. We have legacy, longstanding residents in conversation with an applicant, with a developer, who wants to invest in more housing stock and supply in our city as we continue to grow, but wants to do it in a respectful way, in a considered way. And I just want to express my appreciation for that good faith effort, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fox?
I wanted to echo Commissioner Neptune's thoughts there and applaud the applicant and the community for talking to each other about some of these really important issues and then taking that extra step to make contacts with staff in different departments to try and fix some of the problems that are outside of this particular development. I was wondering if there was any update on the traffic study for speed bumps, like when that might occur?
Yes, good morning, Commissioner. Carter Roberson with Transportation. I did get an update yesterday from our traffic calming staff. They've completed the evaluation. Unfortunately, this site did not meet our two defining criteria for eligibility in our program. So I've figured out our process a bit more. I could share that with all. The two things we look at when determining whether traffic calming is applicable at a site is a speed metric. We look at the 85th percentile speed. And if that is over seven miles per hour above the speed limit, that's defined as a consistent speed problem. That's something that's a best practice. We found from numerous other traffic calming programs across the country, we use that. We also have another criteria that's kind of specific to Raleigh. We also look at crash data. We pull all crashes from the prior three years to see if any of those were speed-related and could be mitigated by some form of infrastructure. In this case, we didn't find any crashes that would be mitigated by something such as a speed hump.
Commissioner Miller?
Quick follow-up on that. So you did do the study of the speed metric, and you said that for that criteria, there was not a consistent speed problem over seven miles per hour?
Yes, we found that it's consistently within
Less than seven miles per hour.
Five miles per hour.
What is the speed limit there?
25 miles per hour. This time, our 85th percentile was coming up as 25, so right there at the speed limit. We did do two previous evaluations, and November 2022 and April 2024 saw the same things.
Is that the lowest speed limit that the city has in residential neighborhoods?
I believe so. Don't believe we post slower than that.
Did that answer your question, Commissioner Miller?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Omakaya?
Two questions. One, on the slide, it said that there was infrastructure impact. What type of infrastructure impact and what's being done to mitigate it?
I might have to defer to the case planner on that one to see what they meant with that. I could speak more to you if...
Infrastructure impact was the fire access.
Okay. And my other question, just for clarity, is this the case where there are... These are 1,200-square-foot tiny homes for $350,000?
Yes, ma'am.
And you all are the residents. You all have spoken to the developers, and you all are okay with this development in your neighborhood?
I think okay is a strong word, but I think that you've heard the term of work with them, what the city needs. I would say. But the ideal position, not change the zoning, but given that there's a need that we're trying to work with, we need responsible citizens. But I think that people here live in much larger homes and would prefer to see larger homes. Certainly, if there's smaller homes, and they have those homes look like the homes in the neighborhood.
Thank you. When we bring it back to the table, the public comment period is over. So we can speak to staff, the applicant, but the public comment period is over. Did that answer your questions?
It did, but can I say something else? Or does it have to be? Do I have to wait?
No, if you...
Just to the planning commission as a whole, I kind of said this before. I hope that we start, that we look at the decisions that we're making comprehensively and not in silos as isolated rezonings, because they have comprehensive impact. I know that the city needs housing, period. There's a housing shortage affordably or unaffordably. And of course, the more supply we create to meet demand means that naturally, economically, prices should go down. But we are also living in unprecedented times where people are struggling. And if this is an area that 71% demographic impact, I mean, index reflects that it is low-income and minority population. And rent is already up 43.8% since 2016. And 88% of the people in this area are people of color, 54% are low-income, both well above the city average. 16% lack high school diplomas, doubling the city's average, indicating heightened needs for equitable housing strategies. And as the city made their comment about this presentation, they used the term "vulnerable populations." And we have a lot of communities in our city that are naturally occurring affordable. And if we're not considering all the decisions we're making, because there's some coming down the pipeline on this agenda that... Also, I'm going to bring this back up. If we're not looking comprehensively at the decisions that we're making and we're just throwing up housing at different places inequitably because the density is not spread throughout the city, all the rezoning, and most of them that we see are in District C. They're in this area because the land has, you know, not been invested in, for whatever reason, being held to this place, where this can start happening. And oftentimes, we see residents from those areas come here being very, very willing to work alongside of developers and just say, hey, can we get a speed bump, or can we get this in this area? In other areas, we see people just saying no. And oftentimes, we listen to the people that just say no. And the people that are saying we're willing to make concessions, we don't even listen to them. We just do whatever we want. So I'm just being mindful that this is a city that we're saying we're building for all people, low-income, high-income, upwardly mobile, people who have been here, legacy residents. So I just want to caution the planning commission to make sure when we're making these decisions, we're not just thinking about putting housing, wherever we're putting housing, and adding to the supply if it means that we're removing the ability to afford that supply from some of the same people that live around the areas that we're developing.
Thank you, Commissioner Omakaya. Is there a particular condition that you wanted to see with this case that you're not seeing? Or is there a way that this rezoning could address some of your concerns?
I don't think that 1,200-square-foot tiny homes for $350,000 will address what I'm saying. But I do think that at bare minimum, if the residents are saying they're willing to go along with it and all they're asking for is a speed bump or for the houses to fit the criteria of the houses in the neighborhood that actually adds to and fits the character of the neighborhood, which is something that we often consider when we're talking about approving or not approving rezonings. I just think that that needs to be considered by the developer, and it shouldn't be a case where people feel like they have to go along with it and just deal with it. So I would hope, they already said they're not making conditions on materials for whatever future reasons. But hopefully, these houses don't look like eyesores. Even if people like the way they look, they could still be eyesore in a neighborhood that doesn't look like what they're building there.
Okay, thank you. Are there other comments, questions from commissioners? Okay, seeing none, then I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve rezoning case Z825 and to adopt the proposed consistency statement contained in today's agenda materials.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Ottwell. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. All opposed? Commissioner Omakaya is opposed. Is there anything else you'd like to say about your opposition or...? Sanita, you got all that? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. We will move on to new business. And before we get started, let me pull my agenda up. Because we got a late start today, it's not likely that we are going to get through all the items on new business. So I want to check and see if there are people here to speak on particular items. We might change the order of the agenda to make sure people who came out are able to speak. So let me start with item F1 Z1625 Creedmoor Road. Is there anyone here to speak on that one? Beyond the applicant, sorry. Any members of the general public here to speak on, okay? Okay. Z2225 Watkins Town Road? Okay. Z525 3027 Rock Quarry Road? Alrighty. Z1125 2230 South New Hope Road? And Z1325 3219 Pool Road?
I believe I saw just the applicant here.
Okay, great. Well, then we'll just keep the order that we have. So first up on new business is Z1625 61... So first up on new business is Z sixteen twenty-five, sixty-one hundred, Creedmore Road. This is our first time hearing this, so we'll receive a full presentation from staff.
Again, good morning, commissioners. My name is Arthur Cashwell the fourth. I'm here to present rezoning case Z sixteen twenty-five for the zero-point-six-seven-acre site located at six-one-zero-zero Creedmore Road. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from R four to office and residential mixed-use five stories, O X five. According to the future land use map, the area is designated as office and residential mixed-use. The surrounding zoning pattern is predominantly R four with one adjacent parcel sharing O X zoning and one other adjacent parcel sharing a commercial mixed-use designation. The site is square-shaped, measuring one-hundred-and-forty-five feet in length by one-hundred-and-three feet in width and is currently developed with a single-unit dwelling constructed in nineteen sixty-five. It is not part of any named subdivision. The property is located directly across from Jeffries Grove Elementary School with frontage on Creedmore Road, a major north-south thoroughfare. The nearest major intersection is Creedmore Road and Lynn Road. Adjacent zoning includes office mixed-use to the south, R four to the east and west, and commercial mixed-use to the north. Surrounding land uses include low-scale residential to the east and institutional slash public facilities to the west with additional medium-scale residential, office residential mixed-use, and neighborhood mixed-use districts within a thousand feet. These images offer multiple street-level perspectives of the proposed site. The top-left image shows the view of the site when facing it from Creedmore Road. The top-right depicts the closer view of the site along with its accompanying open space. The bottom-left image highlights a full-front view of the site. And the bottom-right image displays another side angle of the site from Creedmore Road. Zoning change from low-density residential R four to office mixed-use. The site size is zero-point-three-four acres. Height increase from forty feet, three stories, to eighty feet, five stories. Residential capacity increase from two units to seventeen units. Office potential up to fifteen thousand eighty-three square feet allowed, none under the current zoning. Retail potential up to four thousand eight-hundred-and-eighteen square feet allowed and none under the current zoning. In terms of walkability, the site is fifty-three, which is more, which is much more walkable than a Raleigh average of thirty-one. As far as transit access, the site scores thirty-two, has slightly better transit access than average, than the average score of thirty. The bike friendliness, the site is twenty, which is less bike-friendly compared to the city average of forty-one. Transportation costs, the site scores seven, within a seventy percentile, suggesting residents likely face somewhat lower transportation costs. And job access, the site scores sixty-two percentile, meaning it has better-than-average access to jobs within a reasonable commute. There is a bus stop for northbound Go Raleigh Route thirty-six L Creedmore. Route thirty-six runs every thirty minutes from five AM to ten-thirty PM connecting Crabtree Valley Mall to Town North Shopping Center. However, the nearest southbound stop is located half a mile north on the opposite side of Creedmore Road. There are closer southbound stops, but they require crossing at an unsafe mid-block location to access. In terms of affordability, the housing supply, it adds housing by allowing higher density and more housing types under O X five. Existing housing, the site likely contains naturally occurring affordable housing, which is the nineteen sixty-five single-unit dwelling. Subsidized units, there were none proposed. Housing variety, yes. O X five permits all housing types beyond detached housings, houses. And transit access, there is a bus stop, which mentioned thirty-six L Creedmore Route, which is about eight-hundred feet away. In terms of demographics and land use history, the demographic index, the site is five percent, which is much lower than Raleigh overall, thirty-seven percent. People of color, lower share at the site, ten percent compared to Raleigh's forty-six percent. The low-income population, the site, six percent is much lower than the citywide average of twenty-nine percent. Language barriers, there are no fat, none at the site, zero percent compared to three percent citywide. Less-than-high-school education, none at the site, zero percent compared to eight percent citywide. Young children under five, similar, five-point-four percent for the site, six percent for the city of Raleigh. Adults sixty-five plus, higher at this site, eighteen percent than the citywide average of eleven percent. And the rent change since twenty-sixteen, larger increase at the site, forty-point-three percent compared to Raleigh's twenty-five-point-five percent. The site is shown as office and residential mixed-use intended for frontage lots where low-density residential is no longer appropriate. It encourages the mix of residential and office uses. It limits a large-scale retail to preserve focus on employment and housing. Rezoning, proposed change from R four to O X five supports the future land use map by permitting both office and residential uses in one district. The O X five district allows offices, multifamily housing, and limited neighborhood retail services such, it serves as a transition between higher-intensity mixed-use areas and surrounding residential neighborhoods. O X five permits up to five stories, eighty feet higher than nearby residential but consistent with future land use map goals. Rezoning enables more efficient use of a major street frontage with added employment opportunities and housing variety near jobs and services. The U D O transition standards, height step-down setbacks and landscaping, they ensure compatibility with adjacent low-scale residential areas. And for the overall benefit, it supports integrated, transit-supportive, and economically vibrant corridor development consistent with long-term goals. This site has no urban form designations. The proposed rezoning from R four to O X five is generally consistent with several vision themes of the city of Raleigh, with the city of Raleigh Comprehensive Plan. Overall, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the city's broader planning framework, supportive multiple vision themes that emphasize economic vitality, transportation, integration, housing diversity, sustainability, and managed contact-sensitive growth. The rezoning aligns with city goals to increase housing supply and make better use of existing transit access. There were no inconsistent policies identified. There were no outstanding issues. The next P C meeting date is September ninth, twenty-twenty-five, and the deadline for action is October twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll now hear from the applicant. The applicant and those in support have a total of ten minutes.
Good morning, everyone. My name is James Grissom, and I am the grandson and consultant to the estate of Maddie Hayes Grissom, who is the current resident at the property. She was actually funeralized on August twelfth of twenty-twenty-five. So I'm here as well with my aunt Cynthia Bell, who is trustee of her estate. We are seeking to have this property rezoned to a mixed-use residential and commercial space to provide housing solutions for the senior community. I myself am a Raleigh native. My grandmother passed away at ninety-seven and has lived in Raleigh her entire life. And so this piece, this parcel, as well as the community surrounding it, have been in our family for generations. And the land that Jeffries Grove Elementary School across the street is built on is also family land that was given to the state for the development of that school. So we have a long history of being in this community. Excuse me, my contacts are drawing, so. But yes, so we have a long history of being in this community and would like to maintain our presence through, one, her transition of life, but also as my aging aunts and uncles, as well as members of the community from my church and all, we find it more and more pressing to provide senior housing options that allow for dignity and independence, but allow also familiarity and a sense of community where folks have already lived. And so that is our objective here. Our objective is to convert this, once our family home, into a community staple that will eventually serve others like my grandmother, who gave tirelessly and continuously to this community to make sure that they had the things that they needed. She was a custodian at Jeffries Grove Elementary School, as well as a home, home care provider, as well as a maid in Raleigh. And so she's had a great impact with very little means. And this is our effort as a family to use our intellect, our skill, our prowess, our knowledge, and our love for her and our passion to make an indelible mark on this community. And that is our goal. So that coupled with making sure that we also provide assets to the community that serve those who are most needed. And so while there may not be evidence of black and brown people in this part of town, as I noted from the commentary, know that my family has been up and down Creedmore Road for the last hundred years, and we intend to keep it that way. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. And my condolences to you and to your family. Is there anyone else with you that would like to speak? You still have seven minutes.
Okay. No, my aunt is here, but she would not like to speak.
Okay. Okay. In that case, is there anyone here who wants to speak in opposition to this case? Okay, seeing none, we will bring it back to the table for questions and comments from the commissioners. Do you have any questions or comments for staff or for the applicant? Commissioner Otwell?
It seems pretty straightforward to me. It looks like it's, it's the Comprehensive Plan and the future land use map. And I love that you're keeping in the neighborhood. I drive down this road almost every day and have often noted that house. Looks very well-kept and somebody loves it. So I'm ready to move to support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Otwell. And I agree. I live in this general area too, and as I've lived in Raleigh and learned the history of Raleigh, even though this, the numbers are low, I do know the Jeffries Grove area has, is a very diverse area. So I'm really excited to hear what you're trying to do and to continue your family's legacy on Creedmore Road. It's consistent. I don't have any concerns either. Questions, comments from anyone else? Seeing none, I will.
May I add one just?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Miller.
Commissioner O'Haver is not here. But in that same vein, it's a question for staff. Could you talk about the neighborhood transitions that might occur between, the height transitions between this lot and the surrounding R six? Just speak to that for a moment. I'm sitting in his seat as well, so I'm really channeling him.
Hi, good morning. Hannah Reco, Planning and Development. Yeah, so neighborhood transitions apply to mixed-use districts where they abut residential districts in most cases. The height transition specifically is what is called Zone C of the transition. So it's essentially fifty-foot buffer from that shared property boundary before a building could be built. And then the full height of the, of the structure could not occur at that point. It would have to slope up, I believe, at a one-by-one basis from there.
And there's not currently a single-family home immediately next door, right? It's Zone Mixed Use?
To the, to the east, correct?
Yes, okay.
Or, sorry. To the east is residential.
Is there a single-family, is this going to be right in someone's backyard? Those five stories?
I'd have to check about that.
There's a single-family home to the east and then there's a public storage to the west.
Public storage use?
A public storage to the west, like a office mixed-use. See if I can pull it up on the map. So right here, outlining in gray is where the site is. And then in this blue area here is where there's like a public storage facility and three-story brick building. Not sure exactly what that business is, though.
What about the R four immediately to the west?
Across the street from Creed.
No, I'm sorry, to the east.
Oh. I'm sorry, which area are you asking about?
Where she just drew.
Oh, right here where you just drew. Yeah, that is the R four, a single-family home neighborhood, correct?
Gotcha. And they have not, and I'm sure that everyone has received notice and, and.
Yes, ma'am, within five hundred feet.
Okay. All right, I've done my O'Haver duty.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Then I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Fox?
In regards to case Z sixteen twenty-five, I move to recommend adoption of the proposed consistency statement dated August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five, contained in the agenda materials, and to recommend approval of the zoning amendment.
Thank you, Commissioner Fox. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Otwell. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Great, that's unanimous. Next case, Z twenty-two thirty-five, three-one-zero-one Watkins Town Road. Again, we're hearing this for the first time, so we'll receive a full presentation from staff. Mr. Cashwell is busy today, I see.
Apologies, commissioners. When it was submitted in Escrib, the wrong application was put with the staff report, but I placed a copy of it on, in front of you all. That's the printed-out version. The first part of it is the staff report. The second part is the actual, is the correct application for this. So again, my name is Arthur Cashwell the fourth. I'm here to present rezoning case Z twenty-two twenty-five for the zero-point-nine-nine-acre site located at three-one-zero-one Watkins Town Road. This is a rezoning in an annexation. The annexation will be on the next meeting for City Council if approved here. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from R thirty Wake County to R six. According to the future land use map, the area is designated as low-scale residential. This is paired with the annexation case A X twenty-one dash twenty-five. The applicant requests to rezone a zero-point-nine-nine-acre site located at three-one-zero-one Watkins Town Road in northeast Raleigh from Wake County Residential R thirty to residential to R six. The purpose of the rezoning is to establish zoning for the property following its annexation to the city. The current R thirty district permits only low-density residential uses on large lots. The proposed R six district allows a greater variety of housing types at a higher densities consistent with the site's future land use map designation. There are no zoning conditions associated with this request. The site is outside the extraterritorial jurisdiction, and there is an associated annexation request, previously mentioned A X twenty-one twenty-five, that would, if approved, provide city services to the one single-family home currently located on the site. The subject property measures approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-six feet by one-hundred-and-seventy-five feet and is developed with a single-unit dwelling constructed in nineteen forty. It is not located within a named subdivision, but it is situated across from the Willow Lake subdivision to the west. The nearest intersection is Watkins Town Road and Watkins Road, with Mitchell Mill Road as the closest major road and U S four-oh-one slash Lewisburg Road as the nearest highway. The site is surrounded by a mix of residential zoning districts, R six, R thirty, and R four, reflecting a gradual transition in density across the area. Land uses in the vicinity are primarily single-unit residential neighborhoods with Willow Lake providing the most prominent nearby development contacts. And townhouse lots located to the south further contribute to the area's mix of housing types. The site is located directly across from the Watkins Road property, a thirty-eight-point-twenty-two acre undeveloped parcel designated for park and open space. There are no supportive housing facilities or other special land uses in the immediate vicinity. These images offer multiple street-level perspectives of the proposed site. The top-left image shows a single-family dwelling on a site from Watkins Town Road. The top-right image depicts the left side of the site, its property frontage from Watkins Town Road. And the bottom image highlights the right side of the site's property frontage from Watkins Town Road. The zoning change from R thirty to R six, the site size is point nine, is zero-point-nine-nine acres. The height increase will be from thirty-five feet to forty feet, three stories. The setbacks front reduced from thirty feet to ten feet, side remains ten feet, and rear reduced from thirty feet to twenty feet. Residential units increase from one unit to ten units. In terms of walkability, the site walk score seven, as much lower than the city average of thirty-one, indicating poor pedestrian accessibility. In terms of transit access, there is no transit score available, which suggests little to the no-transit service compared to the city average of thirty. Bike friendliness, the site score sixteen, which is well below the city average of forty-one, showing limited bike infrastructure. In terms of transportation costs, the HUD index score fifty, which is about average nationally. Job access, HUD, HUD jobs proximity index of seventeen, indicating low access to nearby employment opportunities. There's no bus service. In terms of affordability, housing supply adds more units than existing zoning permits. The existing housing, the current dwelling likely qualifies as naturally occurring affordable housing. No, no proposed subsidized units. Housing variety, yes, it allows duplexes, townhouses, and small multifamily buildings. Lot size flexibility, yes, R six permits smaller lots. Lot size flexibility, yes, R six permits smaller lots, six thousand square feet than the city-wide average. Transit access, no, the site is not within walking distance of transit. In terms of demographics and land use history, uh, the site is at the seventh percentile, which is much lower than Raleigh overall in terms of the demographic index. People of color, the site has a smaller share, which is twelve percent, compared to the city's average of forty-six percent. The low-income population, um, is lower at the site, which is eight percent, so that's lower than the city-wide average of twenty-nine percent. Um, limited English speakers, um, none at the site, zero percent compared to the three percent citywide. Less-than-high-school education, slightly lower, four percent for the site, um, compared to Raleigh's eight percent. Young children under five, a lower share at the site, four percent than the city-wide average of six percent. Older adults, sixty-five and older, much higher at this site, which is fifty-three percent, um, compared to Raleigh's eleven percent. And the rent change, six, twenty-sixteen, we have no data available for this site. However, citywide rents, um, rose twenty-five-point-five percent since two thousand and sixteen. For the future land use map designation, the site is shown as low-scale residential, representing neighborhoods, um, with detached houses in a range of missing middle housing types. Support, this, the rezoning will support housing diversity while maintaining a neighborhood-scale character. The requested zoning, R six, is consistent with the future land use map. It permits detached houses, duplexes, townhouses, apartments, um, and cottage, uh, compact court options. The benefits of rezoning, it expands housing variety and modestly increase density compared to current, to the current R thirty zoning, um, which focuses on single-family only. Context fit, it supports incremental infill appropriate to nearby neighborhoods, um, for example, Willow Lake. And its consistency, R six is a corresponding district under the future land use map, advancing its goals for housing choice and its neighborhood compatibility. This site has no urban form designations. The proposed rezoning from R thirty Wake County to R six is consistent with the city of Raleigh's comprehensive plan. It supports housing diversity, compact growth, and alignment of zoning with the future land use map, while posing no identified environmental or infrastructure concerns. These are the existing policies consistent with the rezoning of the annexed property. As far as outstanding issues, there are no outstanding issues. The next PC meeting will be actually September ninth, and then the deadline for action is October twenty-fifth.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We will now hear from the applicant. The applicant and those in support have a total of ten minutes.
Good morning. My name is Tyler Wilson with Lennar, and we're here to help Ms. Stell get her property rezoned, uh, and annexed into the city limits so that she can connect to the city's utilities. And no other developments being proposed at this time. Her home will continue to remain just there to connect for the utilities. I'm more than happy to help answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here to speak in support? Okay, um, those in opposition have a total of ten minutes. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the table. Commissioners, questions, comments? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Otwell.
With regard to Z twenty-two twenty-five Watkinstown Road, I move to recommend adoption of the proposed consistency statement dated August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five, contained in the agenda materials, and to recommend approval of the zoning amendment.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you very much. Commissioner Cochran, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving along, Z five twenty-five, three-zero-two-seven Rock Quarry Road. We will receive a full presentation from staff.
Good morning. Hannah Recau, Planning and Development. This is rezoning Z five twenty-five, a request to rezone one property, uh, thirty-twenty-seven Rock Quarry Road from R six to R ten conditional use. Site's about seventeen and a half acres. Uh, there's also a Shawed One overlay that would remain under the request. So in this area, predominantly residential zoning, there is a cluster of, uh, commercial mixed-use zoning kind of southwest of the site. This is a site that backs up to an interchange of forty and eighty-seven. You can see, um, a lot of forested area along forty, um, that points toward the Shawed One overlay. Um, mix of residential uses in this area, and then some commercial, um, to the southwest. Zoom in on the site, currently, uh, occupied by a house. And some views, um, from Rock Quarry Road. There's one proposed zoning condition, uh, which would maintain all of the dwelling units on the site as affordable, specifically to households earning no more than eighty percent of the area median income for at least thirty years. And that's tied to sort of got of occupancy. The big picture, this is currently has residential zoning, is proposed to have, uh, a different residential district that would allow, um, additional housing types, smaller lots, um, slightly smaller setbacks, and therefore could fit more dwelling units on the site. This area does have a higher walk score than the city average, and that's likely because of the commercial, like the destinations that exist within walking distance. It does have lower transit and bike scores, um, than the city average. Uh, the site is served by Route seventeen. Uh, you can see the dots, uh, the site itself is, again, right here. So it is, um, served by transit, um, but there is a little bit of walk in this area, uh, that is fairly, um, car-oriented. The request would increase the number of units that could be built on the site. It does include a commitment to subsidized units, and, uh, the requested district would allow smaller, um, smaller lots and, and permit a variety of housing types. Um, this area, uh, is, um, home to a, a much greater proportion of the population being, um, people of color and, um, a high, a much higher, uh, proportion of the population having less than a high school education. So those are two pieces from the demographics and land use history to call out. Future land use map on the site is low, low-scale residential. Um, R ten is more in line with the moderate-scale residential category. So if approved, um, this request would amend the map to moderate-scale residential, as it is inconsistent with the low-scale designation. But it is consistent overall with the comprehensive plan. You can see a list of policies. Um, these are really pointing to, um, the increase in housing entitlement, the existence of transit along this area. And then the one inconsistent policy noted is the future land use map inconsistency. That sums up the, the overview. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the applicant, um, and those in support. You have a total of ten minutes.
Good morning, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Um, my name is Beth Trejos. I'm an attorney with Fox Rothschild, and I'm here today on behalf of Rohr's Company to request rezoning of this property to R ten to allow for affordable housing. I have with me Peter Schroeder and Kevin Surgeon with Rohr's Companies, and Link Wilson, who's the project architect with Case Wilson. As you can, can see, and as you heard from staff, um, this property is tucked away on Rock Quarry Road with I forty extending on two sides. Rock Quarry Road is a transit emphasis corridor. Let me just see if I can push forward here so you can see a little bit more closely. The site is in, uh, is catty-corner across the street from Southeast Raleigh High School, and it is, um, just down the road from Walnut Creek Elementary School. There are, there's a lot going on in this area. Townhomes are, uh, under development across the street, um, in a community called Summerfield Crossing. And there is a street, Summerfield Crossing has, uh, created a, um, or fulfilled the city's requirement for a comprehensive plan street, a neighborhood street, that will ultimately move through this property, and our site will continue, our property will continue, uh, that street extension. We think, uh, this location is appropriate for the R ten zoning district, given, uh, the surrounding land uses and the close proximity to the highway. And I'll, I'll point out that the staff recommended and the, this board agreed that R ten was an appropriate, uh, or could be an appropriate zoning district in a low-scale, uh, comprehensive plan, uh, designation. In a prior case today, that, uh, Crosslink Road case was also a low-scale residential comprehensive planning district. We have, um, let me take you, many of these you have seen with your staff, who always does a wonderful job, uh, with their presentations. And Hannah, I'll point out, was pinch-hitting for Erin today, who woke up to a sick child. So, um, we're grateful for her, her efforts. This is our, our concept plan of what, uh, development of the site might look like. Um, it shows that neighborhood street extension that would continue, uh, from, uh, Summerfield Crossing on the other side of Rock Quarry Road. Gives you just a closer look of the site, so you can see how it might be laid out. And, um, some elevations of, of what, uh, these apartment homes might look like. So our, our, we believe, um, well, first, our proposed zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we believe it's reasonable and in the public interest because it increases the amount and type of housing that could be built in this area. It requires affordability, and it's located near a, along a transit emphasis corridor and near major transportation improvements. And thus, we, we ask for your support of this proposal, and our team, uh, is available to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in support of this case? Okay, we will switch to the opposition. Is there anyone here, um, to speak in opposition? Okay, I will note that, um, we received a letter from the Providence Homeowners Association. No one could be present today, but they wanted their, um, comments as, their questions, I guess, as part of the record. So when we start asking questions, I'll just ask the questions to make sure they're on the record. So when they watch this back, they can, um, get answers to their questions. I will bring it back to the table now. Commissioners, uh, do you have any questions or comments? I'll start then with the, um, Homeowners Association. The, the first one they had is regarding road connectivity. This is the Providence, um, neighborhood, and they want to know if there will be any road connections from the proposed development to their neighborhood. I'm not sure where Providence is on this map, but.
Apologize. Could you, could you read the question?
Um, they want to know if there will be any road connections from the proposed development into their neighborhood.
Was that, was that the street plan? So the, um, you can kind of see it here, and I'll try to draw it. There is a street plan connection roughly here, um, located on the street plan that applicants can speak to their intent, intent of design.
Beth mentioned Summerfield. I don't know where.
Is, um, across the street, like, he, it's, it's a, that's a great drawing, isn't it? It, um, it, there's like a, a, a flag, and then the, um, the actual community will be further in. Okay, yeah. There, yes. Not really better. Well, yeah, so, so Summerfield Crossing, there, there's a flag that comes out to Rock Quarry in this area, and the actual community will be a bit, a bit further back. But that comp plan, there is a comprehensive plan, uh, recommendation for a street connection, which is, uh, currently being built in Summerfield Crossing, and it'll, it's planned to kind of come, come through our site. This is what the city has asked of us. And then in the future, ultimately, we'll make some connection, um, to what I think is Purple Garnet Way, if I recall the name correctly, um, in this community here. But that will not be done as a part of our case. We're, we will just extend the street, um, through our site as the city requires.
Okay. Thank you. And if anyone has, like, questions as I'm going through these, please just, just let me know. The second question was about traffic impact and the traffic impact analysis. And as I read the report, one was not required for this.
That's right.
But could be required during site plan.
That's right.
Just getting the answers on the record. Pedestrian safety, uh, will the developer be required to provide sidewalks, crosswalks, and safe pedestrian access to bus stops?
So, um, as a part of the extension of the neighborhood street through the site, there will be additional, um, sidewalk infrastructure installed. I don't know that that gets you to a bus stop, but it is a part of the city's process for improving the area infrastructure.
Okay. Was, uh, Wake County Schools involved or coordinated with as part of this case?
My belief, and I'll let Hannah, my belief is that the city regularly coordinates with, uh, with Wake County Schools. We have not directly reached out, and it would be unusual for us to do as a part of the process.
I'll just add, that's, it's not typically done on a case-by-case basis, but there, there is coordination.
So I think what they're asking, I'm trying to read the question again. The school didn't express any concern about, about this case. Did you get any specific concern from Wake County Public Schools regarding this particular development?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Stormwater and drainage. What stormwater controls will be required to ensure surrounding neighborhoods are not negatively impacted?
We have stormwater staff who's addressed that one.
Even better. Sally Hoyt, Raleigh Stormwater. Uh, so this site would be subject to the, the regular U D O requirements. So that's water quality provisions, as well as controlling the two-year and ten-year design rainstorms for peak discharge. I'll also note that this, um, I've looked up where Providence is, and it's south of Rock Quarry, and it does not look to me that this property drains to that neighborhood. It would drain into the Rock Quarry, the southern part of the property drains to the Rock Quarry right of way, and is picked up by the drainage system there.
Thank you. What buffering, landscaping, and building design standards will be required to ensure a respectful transition?
If this question is with regards to transition to the south across Rock Quarry Road, um, there's, aside from setbacks, front setbacks, there are no buffering requirements. I think the main piece of buffering here is, uh, with the Shawed One overlay, which will require, uh, a buffer along this, um, uh, the property boundary that abuts the highway.
Okay. Thank you. I'm almost done. I think this is the last one, actually, and this isn't really a rezoning one, but I'm gonna ask it so it will be on the record. How will the city ensure the, um, well, actually, this is rezoning. How will the city ensure the affordability requirement is enforced consistently over the full term?
We'll have to take a look at the specific language, um, but it will likely, uh, require coordination, uh, with Housing and Neighborhoods Department.
Yes, there's a condition. They're conferring over here. Give me just a second. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Commissioner Shelburne?
Well, I certainly don't have an answer for this specific project. My observation would be that whatever is the answer, it would be the same, I would imagine, for. imagine, for dozens, maybe even hundreds of properties that this commission has voted on over the years.
Thank you. So the condition offered is for a deed restriction that would be recorded and would run with the land? Okay. Thank you. That concludes the questions from the Homeowners Association. Commissioner Neptune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, I wanted to acknowledge this question or concern about Wake County Public Schools and any, I guess, planning or coordination that's happening with regard to this development. I do want to, I think, thank our colleagues on staff. It sounds like, you know, it's, it would be unusual for Wake County Public Schools to review sort of a, you know, case-by-case basis, you know, a potential growth in their student population. But I just wanted to acknowledge, you know, just from prior professional work within two school systems and, you know, currently serving on the Board of Wake Tech Community College, typically, school systems do plan for population growth. So even though they may not review, again, case-by-case, they are in fact, you know, forecasting, you know, and, and sort of monitoring actively, believe me, the future growth of their student populations and, you know, they're seeking school bonds and, and, you know, planning accordingly. So I just wanted to, just on, kind of on the public record, acknowledge that typically there is a bit of a forecasting happening within our Wake, you know, public schools. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Neptune. Commissioner Omakai, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just going to say that planning staff coordinates directly with Wake County Public Schools on an annual basis to help them with population projections about where we anticipate growth. And then the other thing that I would say is that Southeast Raleigh High School is on the south side of Rock Quarry Road here and having 200 housing units within walking distance of the high school is great from a accessibility perspective.
Thank you for that added note and observation, Ms. Walter.
Commissioner Omakai?
I just wanted to say that I think this is a great project. I'm glad that we're hearing somebody voluntarily give us affordability we need in the city. I do live not far from this, up the street. I live on Rock Quarry. I like that it's across the street from a shopping center. It's right up the street from the police depot. It's up the street from Southeast Raleigh High School. It's up the street from the middle school and elementary school. It's up the street from a daycare. It will add to traffic, but we can't stop that. But we do need density. We need it affordably in this area. So I'm, I want to say kudos to the developer, I mean, to the company and the owner for putting something together that the community, especially where you're looking to develop, it actually needs it.
Thank you, Commissioner Omakai. Other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Omakai?
This is going to be my first time. Do I have to read all of this?
Just the top part, I think.
This where it says location?
It should say, Commissioner Miller will direct.
Okay. We commemorating this, give us a second. Okay, I move to recommend.
I think we need a shorthand for this.
I move to recommend adoption of the proposed consistency statement added August 26, 2025, containing, contained in the agenda materials and to recommend approval of the zoning amendment. This recommendation also includes an amendment to the future land use map and to extend, and to the extent described in the adopted consistency statement.
Thank you, Commissioner Omakai. That was perfect. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Neptune has seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll vote. All in favor? All opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Our next case is Z 1125, 2230 South New Hope Road. We will hear from staff.
Good morning, I'm Hyron Marziano. We have Z 1125 for you today. This is a request to rezone 22.98 acres from existing CX 5 CU to CX 5 CU. Just to briefly cover some of the history here, this is a funky shaped property that goes up along New Hope, South New Hope Road there from Rock Quarry. It encapsulates another property, if you can tell, that internal property. They were rezoned together a few years ago and they share conditions for both properties as one district. Only one of the parcels this time is in this rezoning request. That's why this is a rezoning, is to have a text change for you guys. So this will be creating a whole new CX 5 CU district next, and replacing the conditions that affect this parcel. If that's clear as mud for you. Deadline for this is October 25. The area is predominantly residential and character surrounding with a few other pockets of mixed use. Here's a, a broad oversight I wanted to give you, this section to see where we are in relation to everything. We're just past the, the 40 interchange of Rock Quarry as we head down the road. There is a Greenway, a Greenway Trail to the north and that will play into one of the conditions in the second. We're near Walnut Creek Amphitheater and the Old Town Plan Development is across the street. Zoomed in a little bit so you can see that the city has a pump station on this parcel, big branch pump station. Just some sites to, of the property that you see that it's just vacant undeveloped land at this point. And there's a shot of the pump station. I brought in a flood map for you guys to look at. If you can look at the corner of the property down the Rock Quarry Road, the blue is floodway, the purple, the purply pink is AE flood zone, commonly referred to as a 100-year floodplain, making this part of the area restricted development so that they can't really access that corner as part of the buildable property. Summary of the conditions, they're limiting some of the more intensive uses under the CX zoning. No more than three lots with non-residential primary uses shall front along South New Hope Road. Further limits on the condition, the square footage allotment towards office and other commercial uses. They're limiting the number of dwelling units to 175 and establishing the procedures for the dedication of Greenway easements along the western side of that property. You can see we're losing a little bit of commercial entitlement while we gained some residential entitlement in the 175 units. This pretty much shows you that this is a car-dependent area. We are along a bus route, Route 17, Rock Quarry, but as you can see from the bus stops, we're about a half mile either direction to a bus stop from this location. Which technically would be a walking distance for some people with our measurements, but it's still not really a transit-oriented area. And there's no subsidized units in the proposal. Some of the significant demographics for this area, the percentile for racial minorities is 94%, well above the city average. Point out that the housing cost in this area has also increased significantly since 2016, or since 2020, when we actually have data. So since 2020, it's gone up 34% to 2023. The future land use map, it is consistent with the future land use map, but I'd like to point out this exists within four designations of the future land use map. Pointing back out to that flood map, you can see down in the bottom corner there at Rock Quarry Road, that that's still listed as private open space in the future land use map, not really intended for development of that section. The areas that could be developed on this property primarily are within the office and residential mixed use and the community mixed use districts. We are along a transit emphasis corridor so that no frontage designation would make this inconsistent. However, again, with about 200 feet of flood zone in that area, it wouldn't be developed along the corridor either. So this is consistent with our comprehensive plan. We find it consistent with the future land use map for the areas of development. Inconsistent with urban form map, again, though, not really able to take advantage of an urban form there to begin with. A few of the policies that we're consistent with, many of them are key policies. And we are slightly inconsistent with the frontage again. Zoning infrastructure impacts largely because this is not an annexed property. It's not within our corporate limits and the fire has noted response time issues not being met. Deadline for action would be October 25th. Here's a few of your upcoming meetings, September 9th and 23rd and October 14th. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the applicant. The applicant and those in support have 10 minutes.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Michael Birch with Longleaf Law Partners. Here on behalf of Greenway Residential. Mark Richardson with Greenway Residential is here if there are any, are any specific questions. Appreciate Ron giving staff presentation and identifying kind of the, the issues here. I wanted to just speak to the odd property configuration. I imagine there might be some questions around that. So two brothers own these properties back in 2012. They decided to split them this way. Then someone back in 2019 had both properties under contract and at the time, both brothers agreed to enter into a contract with that group, go through the rezoning process, and that's why the conditions apply to, the current conditions apply to both properties. This property, I will use another slide here to kind of identify the developable areas here, but right now residential is prohibited on the site. And really, the sole purpose of this rezoning is to allow residential. And we have capped the residential development at 175 dwelling units. We have preserved the ability to do commercial, retail, office that was allowed by the 2019 rezoning case. The, since the rezoning, the, the site constraints have only gotten kind of more restrictive because of the city's adoption of prohibiting all fill or lot coverage in the floodplain. It used to be allowed 50%. Then in the rezoning, they limited it to 40%, but now the city prohibits 100% of the development within the floodplain. So those site constraints kind of crept even more into the site. And again, I'll, I'll pull up that floodplain slide here in just a moment. There has been a desire for retail in this area. This property has been marketed prior to the 2019 rezoning and at all times since that point. It has been looked at by a few, but given the site constraints, it, no one has moved forward, obviously. I do want to note, this area over here to the east, on the east side, that has significant entitlement for retail. They're actually kind of going through the text change process now and keeping that retail over there. They envision like a grocery anchored center over there, which makes sense. That has much larger, larger acreage. It is accessed much easier and of course, it has significant number of customers immediately adjacent to it in the Old Town Residential. But all of that to say and kind of justify why we are now asking for residential allowance on this property. So as Ron noted, we are consistent with the future land use map. We're also consistent with a number of key policies, encouraging housing, housing variety. Again, Old Town has a significant number of single-family detach, age-restricted, townhome development. There are some apartments there further south along Rock Quarry, but allowing this type of residential density would complement and provide a new or housing type that is really not prevalent in this area. Also want to note, just from a traffic standpoint, that was something that we heard during our neighborhood meetings alongside, South New Hope, Rock Quarry, and certainly at the intersection. By, I want to note just in the staff report, you may have seen those large numbers of trip generation increase. That analysis was done prior to our cap on residential. That analysis is based on what the envisioned tomorrow assumption of 824 units. Obviously, the 175 represents a significant reduction of that. I just want to note that 175 dwelling units would really result in only 70, you know, peak hour trips in the morning, only about 89 peak hour trips in the afternoon, which is well below what you see in that current entitlement row, which, you know, is like 200 trips in the morning, 301 in the afternoon. So I just wanted to kind of make that point since there has been a change since that staff report. Want to address the inconsistencies. I'll touch on, and again, staff did a great job of kind of highlighting the frontage, the issue with frontage or complying with that. Again, frontage designation, you know, is along Rock Quarry. This whole, you know, corner is impacted not just by floodway, floodplain, but there are also sewer easements that are outside of that, which again, just does not allow anything to be pulled up closer to Rock Quarry, consistent with that frontage designation. Also touch on fire response. You know, it speaks to kind of a full alarm fire. I know you all have seen these comments a lot. I will just note that we're within about a mile and a half of Fire Station 26, just over two miles from Fire Station 12. So that provides three engines and one ladder truck within six minutes. And we'll note that the fire master plan identified a need for a fire station much further east and south to serve that southeast study area, east of the Neuse River. And they also recommended that out in 2035, 2038. So again, I think we're, and we're obviously surrounded by the city limits here. So last, I want to touch on stormwater. Again, back when this, the 2019 rezoning went through, at that time, the property owner could essentially develop within, put, you know, improvements in or fill, bringing up the elevation, 50% of what you see is the pink area. The 2019 condition changed that from 50% and made it more restrictive to about 40%. And again, then in, essentially effective in 2022, City Council said 0% fill or improvements within that pink area. And of course, we can't do anything within the blue area. So we are, of course, abiding by that. We think that that restriction, that 100% prohibition is more restrictive than the 40% essentially allowance in the 2019 condition. So that is why we removed that old condition six. And so we are just abiding by the more restrictive code requirement now than existed in the prior, the time of the prior rezoning. So again, I, I think maybe the stormwater impacts identified in that, in, in the staff report may have been assuming that that 40% applied to the entire lot, not just the floodplain area, but that's, and I can certainly let stormwater staff address that. But we, we think that the current state now is more restrictive and so that's why we removed that condition. So again, just to kind of close, I think I hit each of the inconsistency topics and also kind of identified and addressed kind of the primary issues that we heard during the neighborhood meetings. So we are consistent with the future land use map, key comprehensive plan policies and reasonable and in the public interest by providing new additional housing opportunities here. And obviously reducing, you know, at the 175 unit, reducing the trip generation from this site, which again, addresses those existing and future traffic concerns. I will note just from a, there was another condition in the 2019 case that related to I will note, just from a, there was another condition in the 2019 case that related to like multi-use path along South New Hope. We'll note, again, since that time, the city has adopted more restrictive street cross-section standards. And so when this property develops, it will have to provide both a sidewalk and a separate bike lane above the curb. And so, transportation asked us to remove that 2019 condition because the UDO is now more restrictive. So, here to answer any questions the commission may have.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to the table. Oh, no, wait, no, we won't. Anyone else here to speak in support of this case? Excellent. Anyone here to speak in opposition? Now we'll bring it back to the table. Questions and comments from the commission? Commissioner Omakay and Commissioner Ottwell? Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you, Chair Bennett. I had a few questions and a couple of comments. Did the prohibition on daycare come from negotiation with the neighborhood? It seems like that would be a great thing to have in the neighborhood.
It certainly wasn't, I'll just say, we carried over the, that prohibition of uses from the 2019 case with the only change being, you know, removing residential from the prohibited list. And so that certainly was not part of the conversation during this process as to whether to allow or prohibit daycare.
Thank you. I wouldn't want to hold the case up, but I would be happy if it disappeared between now and when it gets to council. I think it would be great to have daycare in the neighborhood. I appreciate the Greenway condition. We just saw a text in the text change committee proposal to require something very similar. And so conforming with that, it looks like, as far as I can tell, it conforms with what the proposed text change is, and that's great. I like to harp on urban form, but I agree here that it doesn't seem practical to require it. And so I'm quite all right with that being left out. But I was hoping we could get stormwater to talk. I think the staff report says that keeping the condition would be more restrictive than what is currently allowed under the UDO. So I would appreciate some clarification on that.
That was my question too, so thank you for asking that.
Sally Hoyt, Raleigh Stormwater. Yes, so the, Mr. Birch is correct that the stormwater, floodplain requirements in the UDO became more stringent since this was last rezoned. However, it's not black and white, what would be more restrictive? So what is, the current UDO, while it makes it very, very difficult to develop in the floodplain, does not actually prohibit it. It just makes it, you have to get more approvals and you have to either show that you're not increasing the water surface elevation in the event of a flood, or you have to change the FEMA map and show where you would be increasing the elevation of floodwater. So, in our minds, the 40% restriction on fill basically says, should they decide to go through that process, there's a limit on how much fill they could put in the floodplain still, which would limit how much increase there could be. So, I think there's, there's a couple of ways that they could address that. They could either just keep that condition, and that's something staff would be fine with, it's enforceable. Or they could offer a different condition, you know, related to restricted development in the floodplain that got at the same, you know, the spirit of the previous condition.
So, if I'm understanding this correctly, and Ms. Hoyt, if you would just stick around close in case I get this wrong, to develop in the 100-year floodplain, they would have to prove that whatever they were proposing would not raise the level of the flood elevation, given the models that are run. Is that, that's one of the ways?
That's one of the options. The other option is to actually, they can show that there would be an increase and get that approved.
By FEMA.
By FEMA. Now, so, we don't see many projects doing that because it's a long and expensive process, but it's an option.
So, given that the regulatory process would require the applicant to not prove no harm, but to very strictly mitigate whatever they're doing in the floodplain. And I feel a little bit uncomfortable requiring one applicant to reach a greater standard than what I often ask for because we think the UDO is pretty strong as far as stormwater goes. So I think that I'd be okay with the removal of that condition as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Omakay.
I would not feel okay with that condition, only because, and I keep saying I live on Rock Quarry, but I literally live right there. I have gotten no information as far as community engagement. I'm less than 500 feet from this project. I can see my house, it's in the pink zone where it starts. I know for a fact that none of my neighbors have gotten any information about this project as far as community engagement is concerned. This is the second project. This is also what I mean when I say we have to look at the projects comprehensively, because we've also just approved a project up New Hope that's less than a mile from this one. So these are compounding issues that we can't say, okay, well, we'll re-approve this because it won't cause very much issues, or we're okay with what little issues it caused because we don't live there, and we're going to approve this that's less than a mile away that may cause issues like that. We have compounding issues. We just approved up the street on Rock Quarry, that town home, you know, development. For about four miles up Rock Quarry, the other way going towards Barwell, we approved another development. So like within a less than 10-mile radius of this project right here, within the last couple of months, we've approved developments that will impact stormwater regardless of one person saying, well, we're going to mitigate it, it's prohibited in our plan. But then you have another one that's doing it right, like less than a mile from this one. Then you have another development up the road from that one. Then you have another development up, that's part of what I mean when I say we're not looking at some of the things that we're deciding comprehensively. We're looking at them in silos. We're looking at building housing, which is important, but how are we going about building it? And in that area right there on Rock Quarry, once you pass New Hope going further up Rock Quarry, it is a two-lane road. So, just being comprehensive again, we just approved 300, 230 units up Rock Quarry. This will be more residential units at, how much did you say, 175 units? We approved about that 200-plus units less than a mile away from this. New Hope Road is a two-lane road with no sidewalk, no easement. So if there is conversation or community engagement and all they have is a tiny yard sign, there's no place for somebody to pull over and take a picture of it. And most people aren't even aware of what that sign even means to them to even take the time to do that. But there is supposed to be good faith efforts done where they're meeting with community and sending out information, and I've received nothing. And I live right there. So that goes to tell me that the effort to make sure community engagement is happening is not really happening, and this is not the first project. Because the other project of New Hope was the same thing, and there was a house, my mom's house, right within the informed area, and she wasn't informed. So that is leading to us having inequity in who is coming out saying, this is how I feel about this project. I'm happy that I at least sit on the planning commission because I'm able to say, as a person, human being, who my house is in a flood zone. I had to get extra insurance on my house for that purpose. This is going to impact water retention. Combined that this project will go hand in hand with another one less than a mile up on New Hope that could probably be seen within this picture. So then, when are these projects starting? Are they all starting at the same time? Well, that's going to cause serious traffic, especially on a two-lane highway and on another road that doesn't have any, that has like, it's four lanes right there until you get to New Hope, and then it's two lanes the other way, plus another project that's coming in with 230 units. Like, that's kind of what I mean when I say, if there's not somebody speaking to the lived experience or actual impact of the decisions that we're making, then we're making decisions, not determining in the long run, all of that can become a flood zone. Because we're just approving stuff in close radius to other projects that are within a flood zone. So, I would love to see some conditions that will add more protections around making sure my home doesn't wash away. And then once that happens, do I sue the city? Because I'm sitting here and we're talking about it now, of the impact that this could have on residents who were not informed that this is coming. So when it does come and it negatively impacts our housing or my house floods, do I sue the developer? Because I'm suing somebody. Is it the city? Do I come to the planning commission, sue myself? Like, who gets, who gets talked to about the fact that these decisions that we're making, whether they are informed with the comprehensive plan or not, if we're not being mindful about comprehensively looking at how we're approving things and where they're going and the timing they're going in, we could be causing more harm than good. So I would love to, and then he said that they're considering bike lanes. That is a two-lane road, as I mentioned. When you get to that light, it comes a straight lane, a turning lane that you can squeeze through, and then another turning lane, you can go up Rock Quarry going towards, I guess, the food line that's up there. I love the idea of them putting on the other side of it, a grocery store, something grocery anchored. But then that also causes more issue because you're taking away road space. So is the bike lane going to eat into the property? Or is it going to eat into the already available road space that's already two lanes, that's already going to be dealing with, at this point, maybe five, six, 700 units within the next couple of years on a road that has no expansion, mostly has no sidewalks, is heavily congested, has a high school and an elementary school and a daycare on it, which adds more congestion that I had to fight leaving my house today. Plus Walnut Creek is right there, and I have to fight people to get into my driveway. So, I don't know if we're thinking about all of that.
Let me see if I can get some of your, some of your issues addressed. Give me just a minute, Commissioner Cochrane. So, one, I was trying to take notes as you were talking, you'd like to see more conditions around stormwater and protection.
In any flood, anything that could happen.
With regard to the transportation impacts, we've discussed this for some other cases where it's in an area where there's a lot of development going on, and we have concerns about the traffic, but we can't do anything at this table. But what we have done when we have sent the recommendation to council, whether it was to approve or deny, we would make a note to ask council to consider doing some sort of comprehensive traffic study. I know we did that for Buffalo Road, for example, because there was so much going on. While we can't like, ask for a zoning condition to address that impact, we can note our concern and send it to City Council, because they have the authority to authorize staff to look at these studies. So, we could do that with this, if you would like to include that in our motion, in our motion that you're concerned about the amount of development that's going in, and you'd like to see some sort of comprehensive, you know, traffic study, we can request that council consider that. The notification, I'm going to ask staff, because we certainly want to make sure people within the radius are being notified. I know the applicant has to submit the list. Can you explain what kind of checks and balances go in there?
Yes, so, First Neighborhood Meeting requires 500-foot notice. I looked, your house is not within 500 feet. You'll notice that there's a very large parcel on the west side of this site. It's more than 500 feet deep. And then, Second Neighborhood Meeting requires 1,000 feet. Your house is also not within 1,000 feet.
I am on the other side of Friendly, which is right up.
I know, I looked up where your house is. I looked at the map. You're not in that 1,000-foot buffer for the parcel in question.
Okay. So maybe that's, that might be something, A, I think it's a policy that maybe City Council needs to reconsider, because it looks like within the buffer, they don't have to tell anybody about what's happening.
There are parcels on Friendly that are included within the 1,000-foot buffer.
Like 10 houses that's going to be negatively impacted. I'm not arguing with you, I apologize. But I am just making a point, it's not your fault.
So I'm just talking about how the process works. So, 500 foot for the first meeting, 1,000 foot notice for the second meeting, that's well within standard across many jurisdictions, honestly, more, more notice than many jurisdictions offer historically, it's typically 100 feet. So Raleigh is, is sending a lot more letters than many other jurisdictions. And then your, the other question was about how those lists are verified. They're reviewed by the applicant and the staff work together to verify that all the right folks are being included in both the 500 and 1,000-foot list.
I think it's interesting then that there's a planning commission member, and this is coming before the planning commission, and you see that I may be two feet out of the 500 feet, and I don't get a notice, that this is, that's kind of crazy to me.
Well, you're not within 1,000 feet.
Well, 1,002 feet from the site, because most of the stuff around the site is not, people don't really live there. I live in this, I'm saying, because I live in this area, I'm not looking at X's and O's from a map. I get that there are measurements as far as footage that you, people don't have to go to, and a lot of that footage on this project is eating up because there's no houses around it. Until you basically get to Friendly, and then there's a couple houses down Friendly. So, I mean, that might not be something in our purview, but nobody knows about this project. There's not even yard signs up to at least say that this project is happening. So, I mean, it could be within the grounds that nobody knows about it, but I'm just saying, don't nobody know about it.
Posted notices made onsite and within the right-of-way of the zoning site.
I'll go drive up, I'll take a picture so I can show you all. Because what should be happening, what is happening, may be two different things.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Omakay. Thank you, Bynum. Can I just say, it's 11:56. Does anyone need to leave at noon? Can we at least finish this case?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions, comments regarding this case? Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Shelburne, did you have one to Commissioner Cochrane?
Thank you.
Wait, no, you had your hand, didn't you have your hand up before? Cochrane, Miller, Shelburne.
Yes.
This case is very similar to the one we reviewed at Barnwell Road. And there was a lot of discussion there with, with a lot of similarities here. And my, my question for today is, is there a way to continue this, or do we have to make a decision today? Can we vote to extend this discussion?
We don't have to make a decision today. We had some meetings before our deadline for action, and it sounds like we're going to be asking the applicant to consider some additional conditions anyway. So, it will likely be deferred.
Okay. My, most of my questions are to the city around the pump station. Similarly to Barnwell Road, there were some issues around the smells at that lift station and the maintenance of it, which I don't know have been, that I still don't have some clarity on, and I would like to have more discussion around that before proceeding with support for this.
Okay, thank you. We're not going to wrap this case up today. So Commissioners Miller and Shelburne, if you'd just like to get your concerns on the record so the applicant can consider them, if you have a concern, maybe you don't.
Thank you. Now I just wanted to mention briefly, a few replies. First of all, this case, I think, was maybe one of my very first rezoning cases I ever heard back in 2019. So, that and all of the subsequent text changes have been a walk down memory lane, to say the least. The question about, that Commissioner Ottwell asked about the daycare, I went back in my notes, I think that was actually requested by the Southeast CAC at that time, so that was why they did include it. And they did vote, the CAC did vote in favor of that case at that time. I did not see the same kind of turnout in this case, probably because the main request is just to remove the prohibition on housing. We just wanted to address that. In terms of the traffic impacts and stormwater, I absolutely hear what Commissioner Omakay is saying, similar to the CrossLink case where I nudged her afterwards and said, I would love to talk to you more about this offline. Maybe there's a number of topics we could bring up at, to discuss at our retreat, or maybe even strategic planning to talk about some of the bigger picture issues, including what tools we have at the rezoning table, and ones that we don't, that we can be frustrated by, that we don't. But one key way to think about this is, well, that we have to think about this, is the current entitlement versus the proposed entitlement, right? So even under the current entitlement, what are the stormwater conditions versus the proposed? And also with traffic, what is the current trip generation versus the proposed? And under this one, the trip generation actually goes down with the proposed new conditions on rezonings, just because residential units create less traffic than commercial and retail. So that was, so this actually reduces traffic compared to the entitlement. So it's, it's challenging to think about it that way, especially if it's not currently developed. But again, maybe these are all topics we can talk about at the, at the retreat and figure out what we can, what we can impact long-term. Thank you.
So I hate to take more time, especially because I'm really ready for lunch, and I had my breakfast a long time ago. But I wanted to share some thoughts because I'm going to miss the next meeting. I'll be back in Hawaii. And so, and I wanted, as an observation, that I know the developer, Mark Richardson- And so, and I wanted, as an observation, that I know the developer, Mark Richardson, not a client or anything, but I mention that because I know the kind of program he works, and it's the same program that I work in, is low-income housing tax credit. And that almost certainly explains why they've picked this ridiculous piece of dirt to develop on. I mean, no one would in their right mind would want to build, I mean, granted, I only know what I've heard here today, but this is going to be really tough. But it's got to be the reason they're doing it, is because of a state and/or federal policy that makes this real estate fit for the low-income housing tax credit program. I don't know if it's point scoring or basis boost, or something about it. So in other words, there's not many parcels in any jurisdiction, including Raleigh, that are a great fit for the program, and apparently this must be one of them.
Thank you, Commissioner Shelburne. Other questions, comments?
Mr. Birch, you look like you want to say something.
So just based on the, on the comments received, it sounds like there's probably a desire to defer this. I would ask if we could come back at your next meeting, just, I think on the traffic issue, Commissioner Miller hit that with 175 units, I mean, we would be reducing the current entitlement trip gen by more than half. And then on the stormwater front, certainly talk with, with Ms. Hoyt. I mean, my sense is, to kind of equal the condition that exists in the 2019 case, we would essentially say, you know, if we were to pursue one of those options to allow for something in the floodplain, then we would limit that potential impact, as approved by those authorities, to 40%. I think that gets us to, to where we are today. Right now, we're not anticipating, certainly no buildings within there. But again, given the constraints, I think that condition, again, we would keep it status quo on that front. Just on the, the daycare use, Commissioner Otwell, I don't know if hearing from Commissioner Miller, if you have, if you wanted us to continue to pursue allowing daycare, or...
It's not a make or break issue for me, but so I wouldn't want to contradict what the CAC had worked towards.
Okay. Great. I think those were the, the bigger items. But again, if there's anything else that we can address through conditions, we are, we are happy to do so, and we would be getting those in by this Friday in order to come back, what I believe is on the, on the 9th of September.
Great, thank you. So you'd like to, you'll get it in by this Friday, and you'll be ready to reappear at our September 9th meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need to vote on that, or do I just say we're deferring this to our September 9th meeting? Bynum?
I'm just saying we're deferring without objection.
Without objection. We're deferring this case to our September 9th meeting. Thank you all for your questions and your comments. We have just a couple other agenda items. We're going to need to move our next case, which is, I'm sorry, let me pull it up, Z535, no, it's not, Z13253219 Pool Road. We will need to move this to our September 9th Planning Commission meeting. I'm sorry, we weren't able to get to it. And then other business, report of the chair, I don't have a report. Report of the members, any committee meetings?
No report.
We had a committee meeting last week, but I believe it would be too early to report out at this time, so quick preview, we're looking at Greenway Trail policy, so that'll come up. We have a next text change committee, September 17th. Doesn't look like we have an agenda item yet, but keep it open on your calendar, please, and stay tuned.
We have a infrastructure mobility meeting for September 25th, and as far as I know, there are no agenda items, so it's canceled? Okay.
No report.
No report.
There will be no strategic planning meeting this month.
No report.
My apologies, I should have put my glasses on. We do have an agenda item. It's, we're going to look at RHDC updates and text change committee, so we're going to be rolling.
Thank you. And report of the Assistant Director.
I only have beyond what's in my report, I have two things I want to say. One, I want to make sure that you know my colleague, Matthew Clemm, who has been promoted to service planning manager in long-range planning. You'll be seeing him at the table going forward. Very exciting. Matt has been with the department for a number of years, left and went away and came back. So great institutional memory, good knowledge of local government, just a great resource for the department. Really happy to have him with us. And then the other thing that I will say, and I'll send some more information separately, the City Council's Special Committee on Boards and Commissions is meeting on the 15th, and if you're interested in participating in that, would encourage you to participate in person. I believe it's at 7 o'clock at night. Can share more information? I don't know off the top of my head. I will, I can share information with you all directly. And then in my report, I encourage you to click through and look at it. We have included staff bios for everybody in long-range planning. A lot of you are new, we've had a lot of turnover on our side. Wanted to make sure, we all know your faces, you're very important to us. Wanted to make sure you had the same information about us.
Thank you, Bynum. Anything else? We're going to go to the order. We are adjourned. Thank you.